That a work session of the Salem Kaiser School Board, District 24J of Marion County, Salem, Oregon, is called for 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, in Room 1 at the Support Services Center, 2575 Commercial Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon. This meeting is called for charter school application process. And for the record, we have all board members are present tonight, and I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. So, tonight, our goal is to help you understand our internal process that we go through and when we have a charter school application. What my hope is that this becomes one of the items on our summer planning, so that each year before you get one of these, you have kind of a review of the process. But for tonight especially, I want you to be really sure that you understand a kind of a deep level of how we go through the process internally, so that when you get our recommendation, you already know what we've completed internally. The other part of this is, we do have a first reading of a charter school application on our agenda at the business meeting tonight. This work session is only related to process. If you have questions about that agenda item, Ken will be presenting that agenda item tonight, and the regular board meeting will be the place for specific questions about the application. So Paul's going to give a quick overview of the legal process, is that correct?
Right. I have, I'll give you kind of the 20,000-foot overview. Rebecca Jacobson, who's a partner in my law firm, in our law firm, is going to give you some of the legal requirements very quickly, and we'll move through the agenda. My experience with charter schools began before there was charter school law with the Howard Street Charter School. And so, I learned a lot about charter schools pre-charter law. In 1999, the legislature passed Senate Bill 100, which is now in the statute, and you'll, in your packet, you'll see Chapter 338, that's the charter law, and we'll be talking about that, but that's known as Senate Bill 100. Right after that law was passed, a lot of confusion about what to do about the law. I'm sure that Jim Green will remember this, but the first thing ODE did was to gather a committee of persons, I was invited on that committee, Jim was there, many others were there, to talk about how is this going to work? There'd never even been a charter contract developed. The Senate Bill 100 process, really, it's been refined a little bit, but the basic process is this. Two parts. Is, the district answers the question, is the proposal minimally complete? And number two, if so, does the board think the proposal should be approved? And there's criteria under the statute, which we'll talk a little bit about, but that was the process in 99, that's still the process. I drafted what may have been the first charter contract in Oregon and in this district with the 21st Century Charter School. And at that time, I thought, how are we going to do this? We don't even have an idea of what a charter contract looks like. And so, I proposed a meeting with Salem Kaiser administrators, right after that law was passed, where we had our first proposal, and I thought, what better thing than to get together the professionals within the district to look at this? And so, I got together financial services, facilities, student services, special education, instruction, curriculum, and the level area directors. At the time, it was a high school proposal, 21st Century Charter School. But that group of professionals met to review the proposal, it seemed like a reasonable thing to do. That became known as the Charter Review Committee. It wasn't so named back then, but for every proposal that we got since then, the idea was to get the right people in the room who have reviewed the proposal to talk about their particular expertise. And a perfect example, of course, is curriculum. What is good curriculum? What is bad curriculum? Don't ask the HR person. They might know a little, but they're not going to know the details. And so, we've, for curriculum, for example, we've had the curriculum people do research on curriculum that's appeared in a charter proposal to tell us, what is that curriculum like? In any event, the Charter Review Committee became a committee to advise the superintendent. And the superintendent then gives advice to the school board, both on completeness of a proposal and whether a proposal is viable. All the school boards since 1999 urged this kind of a process. And so, this is, it's your process, you've inherited it, and it's been refined over the years with different boards. But since 1999, this board has delegated to the superintendent that first part of the process is the proposal complete. And then, from there, the board has always exercised its own authority, whether to approve or disapprove a proposal. And each existing charter school's gone through that process, it has its own story. I've dealt with all of these and done all the contracts since 1999, and they all have separate, interesting stories on how they developed and so on and so forth. Our past experience has really driven home the need for a thorough and complete review by this Charter Review Committee. Our process met some historical problems, and that was having two charter schools that we closed midterm. And boy, howdy, that's not a fun process, not fun for students and parents who are going to a charter school that fails, and it's not fun for the district staff, or the school board who have to pick up the pieces. And so, our Charter Review Committee, going through those experiences, it kind of galvanized us for doing a really thorough and detailed job in reviewing proposals. And it's a high priority of the Charter Committee to get it right at the front end. If we don't get it right at the front end, and we give you bad information, it's not going to get better. So, many years ago, the Charter Review Committee developed something called the Charter School Rating Scale. And both Rebecca and Ken will talk about that tonight, but it's a list of all the things that charter proposals have to address. Initially, there was a list in the statute, the citation's not relevant, but it was like Item A through X, you had to get all of those. Sometime later, the statute was changed a bit, so that school districts could add requests for additional information. The idea was that when we created this rating scale, that we would have in one place a very easy system for applicants to be able to go through Question 1, Question 2, to tailor their applications that mirrored our numbers. So, there was no question about what were we asking for and what was being, what was, what this response was. This was an easy way for applicants. There's a lot of detail in this. And again, the first rating scale used just the criteria A through X, but since then, there's a whole number of other questions that the district asks, very comprehensive, and it's really quite similar to every school district in the state is asking the same kinds of questions for every applicant who submits a charter proposal. We used to have an administrator, I've worked with three of them since 1999, these were school administrators who, at least their half-time job was all charter work. This was not only reviewing applications and running the Charter Review Committee, but it was communicating and troubleshooting with applicants, doing charter reviews, and overseeing charters. The last person to do that was Joe Grant. He retired this summer. And with him went a lot of experience and knowledge on the existing charter schools and this process. That work fell to this gentleman. So, Ken Partial is new at charter school review. And it's really hard to train someone, this is kind of, you build the bicycle while you're on the bicycle, and that's exactly what Ken is doing. My last couple of points are, the experience has taught us some hard lessons on the review committee. Number one, not everyone who wants to start a charter is capable of successfully operating one. It takes more than good intentions to create a viable charter proposal and to run a school. Lesson two, the better our review at the front end, the better likelihood of success we have by the time it gets to you and you approve a proposal. Ignoring missing or contradictory information at the start of the process doesn't make things better. We've suffered that mistake before and live to regret it. Lesson number three, let's be realistic about finances. Several years ago, the Oregon Department of Education awarded federal grants, startup grants, to charter schools, and many of you who have been on the board a while remember seeing the startup grants in the budget projections. That money's no longer there. It was hard to start a charter school financially with startup grants. Now, that money's not there, so we've tried to be really realistic about finances. Number, hard lesson number four, how much technical assistance to provide? The statute allows us to give technical assistance to applicants, per the statute. It doesn't say how much. And we have had occasions where we've spent an enormous amount of staff resources, time after meeting after meeting, refining applicants' proposals for them. We've often felt like we're writing the application, and we don't want to do that, we're not the applicant. So, the lesson learned is, we will provide technical assistance, we're going to review, we'll help with the first proposal, give feedback when it's a resubmission, if it's not complete and there's a resubmission, we'll talk about that, but we're going to do this twice, and then we're going to be done. Or else, we're in this endless cycle of, we fixed this, and then we fixed this, and it just hasn't worked out so well. So, those are really the hard-learned lessons for us on the Charter Review Committee. I think you'll find this group is, does the very best they can with the proposal that they have to review within their specific area of expertise. In conclusion, your, this is your process, it's been used by your predecessors since 1999. We're certainly willing to hear whatever comments or suggestions you might have. We've tried to make it a really, really good process, so we get a good result. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Rebecca, who, last year and this year, has helped Ken and the charter review team to actually go through these, and she's given her legal expertise in that process. And she's just going to cover very briefly her role in this and how it works.
Okay, so I'll start with the paper you have. Lawyers like paper, and you've got a stack of it. So, here's, the first thing you have is ORS Chapter 338. These, all of the laws related, as Paul said, related to charter schools are in this, related to the formation and the operation of charter schools, are in this chapter. And so, for your purposes, because the discussion will mainly be regarding the formation of charter schools at this work session, Page 3 and 4 of this document, which refer to 338.045 and 338.055, those are the laws that, which state all of the statutory requirements for those items that must be minimally addressed in a charter application. Remember, that's Step 1 of your review, in the Charter Review Committee's review. And then, 338.055 goes to that second level of more substantive review of, is this a good charter school for the district? And you can only look at these criteria to determine if, in fact, it is a charter school that will work for the district. So, I just want that for your future reading, Pages 3 and 4. The next document are, is the Oregon Administrative Rules. And this is ODE writing rules that help implement ORS Chapter 338. Essentially, it's a mirror image of the statute in many places, but there are additional details in these rules. So, I won't direct your attention to any of these, but just so you know, we're looking at these throughout the process to make sure that the district is complying with the law regarding particularly the formation of a charter school. The third document that you have is the district's Charter School Handbook. This is online, this is available for all charter applicants. And like Paul said, it's a great resource for charter school developers to have all of the requirements in one place. So, it's kind of putting in context exactly what the requirement is. You have to submit the application by October 1. That's not in the rule, that's not in the law, but that's the district requirement. So, this, of course, has more specific requirements. And the most important piece of this handbook, as Paul referenced, is this rating scale. And this is what the Charter Review Committee looks at and goes through when they first receive an application. An application is a huge binder. This is hundreds of pages of documents that charter developers have to get together to address all of these elements. It's a very extensive process for charter school developers to address all of these points. And so, in turn, it's quite an extensive process for your administrators to go through, make sure that they understand and read, and say, did that charter school developer minimally address? Do we like it? That's not what the question is. It's, did they minimally address it so that we can deem it complete? And then, get on to the substantive review. So, that's what this is. It's intended to be a tool for the developers to go through, again. And many developers, what they will do is, is they will line up the number here with the number in their big binder to make it quite easy for us to go through and say, yep, minimally addressed, minimally addressed, minimally addressed. So, that's the intent, and then, what will occur is, after everyone has reviewed it, we'll have the meeting, and I've been there helping with Ken and Joe prior to Ken go through the application with the team, and everybody reaches consensus about whether or not it's been minimally addressed by the charter school developer. Those are the legal requirements.
Question, Nancy?
Oh, in the past couple of years, we've had requests to approve a charter school with the financial piece kind of not really considered, given that we'll, is that why you're pointing to that? That there's some benefit to charters, to being in some queue somewhere. If it's statutorily required for everyone to be financially capable of opening this school, then, and then it seems like there, no charter school anywhere in the state should be getting into any queue based on the idea that we'll worry about the money later. So, I'm kind of confused about that, because it seems really clear here that the law says that they need to be financially capable of opening or running or sustaining or...
Well, the proposal needs to show a budget. And there's, just like in your school budget, there's quite a bit of discussion about what the budget means. And so, as long as there's a budget that covers the years of the first three years of the charter operation, and as long as it contains the stuff that budgets should contain, instruction, facilities, et cetera, et cetera, then we say, it's a complete budget. It might be completely inadequate to fund the school, but you've got the budget there. And so, we've had the experience where we've recognized, and the applicants have recognized, yeah, we won't, we won't have enough money to fund our budget unless we get a grant. And so, we've brought that to you, we've said, yes, it's complete, it is a complete application, there is a budget there. It makes some budget assumptions that you, as a board, are going to have to determine, is that a financially viable proposal? And that's the difference between the completeness, is there a budget, and the question you, as a board, get if it's a complete proposal, and that is, is it financially sustainable? Under the other, one part of the analysis is in .045, that subsection that Rebecca pointed out, and the second analysis is in .055.
So, is it statutorily required that we do it the way we're doing it? Or would it be possible to have a two-step process where we say that the curriculum, the planning, the budget, all that works, and you can move forward with this, but you need to come back to us and show us you have the money? In a way that allows schools to say, you know, we've met all these requirements, and that they would then have an easier time finding money? Or is that not...
Well, the statute does not, you can let me know what you think about this, too, Rebecca. But the statute says, you've got a timeline. Once you say it's complete, you have a certain number of days to look at the whole thing and say, and one of the major questions is, is this financially sustainable? So, if you were to say, no, it's not financially sustainable, then there doesn't seem to be a provision in the charter law yet that says, we'll conditionally approve you, knowing that you don't have enough money, so that you can apply for a grant because you're an approved charter program. Now, I don't, of course, know all the grant sources, and so, there might be a way for a school board to give enough of a thumbs up in a public session of the board to say, yes, if you got this money, we don't see any impediment toward approving you, but you have to, you have to answer the question, is the proposal you have before you financially sustainable? And there's always the question mark, what happens if you don't get the grant?
Thanks, I think that helped.
So, you're saying that there is, there's no other way to, to limit the school to whether, to whether or not it gets that grant? So, like, to make that as a requirement, so like, you approve the, it conditionally in some way? Or you still have some power to terminate it if that requirement or that assumption is not met?
I'm just trying to think creatively about what a board might, the conversation a board might have with a charter applicant. The charter law is clear that you have to determine that the charter is financially viable on a date certain in order to approve them as a charter before you can draw, before you can negotiate a contract. So, if there was a funding source out there who needed to know of the board's intentions, I'm saying, maybe we could creatively think about giving enough of a thumbs up on the proposal that we could consider it in the future if the money came in. But the statute does not allow you to ignore the financial stability at the date you say we're approved the contract. There's no language in the statute about anything called conditional approval, we're just making that up. And it doesn't mean anything unless you define what it means. But for the ODE grant, ODE has typically required a board resolution saying, we approve this charter, with no strings attached. Of course, it has to be, a contract has to be negotiated, but that's true of all charters, and that happens in due course. But there's a real jam for applicants, because there's the, they need to, they need approval to apply for the money, but you can't give approval if they can't prove financial stability.
Clear as mud.
Chris, go ahead.
Very clear. Catch 22.
So, in other words, I'm going to summarize that, and then I have another issue. So, what I'm hearing you say is, so, a charter school has to be financially viable, and the ODE money has to just make them more viable?
Well, that's, I think, there are still, there are applicants today that can be, can show financial viability without a grant.
Right.
And we have had charter proposals that say, we can do it on the money we get from the district alone, but we anticipate additional fundraising from parents, which will fill in additional programs that we'll add when we get the money. So, in that case, you can say, yeah, you can do what you say you're going to do with the money that you get. The trick right now is, we have no proposers coming to us who already have the promised grant. All of our previous applicants, they get the grant, and they use the planning grant for developing their proposal. And so, they actually get some expertise to write the proposal, make sure it's solid. There's not that money right now, at least from the traditional sources.
And my other, my other issue, I've been on the board for five years, and as we have dealt with the various charters that we've dealt with, there's been this nagging thing going on in the back of my mind, and I've said it from the podium a number of times when we're talking to applicants, that I'm wondering where the innovation is, I'm wondering how they're, what they're proposing might be scalable, so that a district could adopt the kinds of things that they're trying to make our education system better. And so, I've always been pretty clear about my need to, for myself, to approve a charter that actually is going to move the system forward in some way. And I don't, as I read the A through X, as you put it, I think, I think it's actually A through Y, I don't see anything in there that really precludes somebody walking in here and saying, we want to run a charter school that's going to look just like one of your schools.
Right. In the preamble to the law, the legislature describes their...
Innovation and choice.
Their policy considerations.
Exactly.
That's what's supposed to drive these proposals. But in reality, when you look at the criteria, all the charter proposer has to do is to say, we have a comprehensive instructional program, and here's what it looks like.
Right.
And, but I think you, as a district, get to talk about what's, who are you trying to reach? I mean, that's one of the, who is the target population? What's distinctive about the curriculum you're using? I mean, you get to have that conversation on a substantive level.
But as it now exists, I don't see that a board would have the opportunity to basically say to somebody, yeah, you've met all the criteria, you can run a school, you've got, you're financially viable all as well, but you're not adding anything. And unless you take 3A into consideration, and 3A under .045 says, in addition to the requirements of subsection 2 of this section, the school district board may require any additional information the board considers relevant to the formation or operation of a public charter school. And I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, if a district were to say, in this school district, the purpose of charter schools is, can they do that? Can a board do that and say, you don't fit our purpose? Yes, you're viable, yes, you are, you have a program that would be functional, yes, you seem to have the personnel in place to make it work, but no, you don't add anything. You don't serve our purpose as a school district. Can a district board actually say, here's our purpose?
Well, I think what you'd have to do is find the substance of the proposal that, and compare that with the criteria, and maybe what you say is, since you're doing our curriculum, this creates an adverse financial impact on us, because really, all you're doing is our curriculum at another location, and so, that is a financial impact that's not outweighed by the unique program that the charter law... not outweighed by the unique program that the charter law contemplated. In three-three-eight-point-oh-five-five talks about in- whether the value of the public charter school is outweighed by directly identifiable significant and adverse impact on the quality of public education. So I think you get to talk about that. Now, where you ultimately come down on your particular fact pattern, I don't know where the board comes down on that, but there's an appeal process. So, the Oregon- the State Board of Education, through the ODE process, gets to look at your decision and say, we think you've got it wrong, board, Salem Kaiser board, go do it again, look at this again. And if the board agrees, have another discussion. If not, the risk of making the decision you're talking about is that the state board becomes the sponsor, and all of a sudden, you have a charter school that, with Salem Kaiser students, that you don't have any oversight of. So, that's about as close as I can get to an answer on your question.
Okay, I want to-
I'll just- I'll just weigh in that it is of interest to me that we, as a district, do not have any kind of a, for lack of a better term, a philosophy statement about exactly what we see charter schools as adding to our school district. We just simply go through a process of looking at a bunch of criteria to determine viability and determine preparation and determine those kinds of things, and if they meet all those things, we, in essence, are required to say, yes, you will take kids out of our regular school system, and you will take them over into your school, and you will educate them there, without any kind of commitment on their part to innovate, to educate us, I mean, the rest of the district, about what they- they learn. And conversely, I'll also pick on the district a little bit, because I think we have in our district some- some charter schools that are actually moving the dial. When Mike Weddle was here last time to talk about Howard Street, he showed data that showed that they are, in fact, moving the dial, and yet I don't see any real effort on the part of the district to say, okay, what are they doing differently over there that's actually moving that dial, and how can we implement that kind of stuff in our schools? So, I- I just see the whole charter school process right now as sort of an exercise that really isn't moving us anywhere, and I would like to see us talk about, how do we make it move us? How do we make it actually produce something of value?
Okay, I want to leave Ken with enough time to finish what we've got laid out to do today. What Chris is getting into is a discussion about changing our process, and that'll need to happen during our summer retreat, I think, okay?
Just introducing the concept.
Right, I want to refocus back on how the process is working right now, because that's important, we understand it for what's coming before us right now. So Chuck, did you have something around what's been presented on the process?
Just a question I had on the rating sheet, and how that ties into what Chris is saying, is there anything, and I haven't had- I haven't taken the time to read the whole rating sheet, but is there anything on the rating sheet that addresses what you're talking about, Chris?
It's pretty much straight out of A through Y.
And is this a district document that could be supplemented and added and changed, or is this an ODE thing that we're following?
That's what I'm asking.
So Rebecca, as I understand it, we can, and if you look at the- I'm going to take this from Ken just for a couple minutes here, but if you look at the rating scale that's in your packet, the bold items are straight out of the law, the other items are additional criteria that we've added, and we can add additional criteria to be sure that the application is complete. But the real nuance in the question is, can we build criteria that dictates philosophy or innovation? Right?
So, right, and you can certainly add anything you want to what they discuss in the application, but what the actual decision, whether or not to sponsor the charter school, has to be based on these statutory pieces. So that's the distinction. You can address it-
And I guess my question to Chris is-
And that's why Paul went back to trying to find something in A through Y that we could work with to do that.
No, I've always felt that that's such an important part of the charter review process is the comments from the community. We've- we've never had a charter proposal where the community that it was going to serve wasn't excited about some unique kind of program that would serve a particular need within the community. So, under Chris's scenario, if you had some people that came in and said, we just would like to start a new Salem Kaiser school, a charter school, using your same curriculum with no differences in teaching methods, enrollment, we'd just like to have our own school, really, then I think you do get to probe, what's the- what's the community support for- I mean, we already have our community supporting our schools, we don't need another school.
Right.
And so I think you get to make some kind of creative inquiries, even within what's already here.
And we get a look at it under Roman numeral four, the six of our own charter school handbook, where we talk about what the value of the charter school is, where that weighing balance is, which is what you referenced earlier.
Right.
Which is why we wrote the law that way.
But I haven't seen us do that yet. Basically, I've never seen us as a board have that- that criteria, so that's why I'm interested in it.
Jeff.
Okay, I have a few questions. With Joe Grant no longer with us to provide more, I guess, more in-depth, single-person time on these, is it- is it overload on Ken's schedule to delve into these charters?
How about if I answered that one for you? It is.
That was- that was the case.
It is, I think that is, because it is a- when you're in the middle of it, it's a big deal. Now, there's other times when you don't have to spend as much time on it, but if you combine that with not only the review of the application, but strong oversight of these schools and monitoring their fiscal accountability and all the things that go with them, we should have some FTE assigned to those other than the system.
And right now, our level directors perform that oversight of the actual schools in place.
Depending on which grade they serve in?
Correct.
If it's a middle school, Melissa-
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me.
So, did- did Joe treat items one through ten of the requirements, or one through eleven, as all being pass/fail, or for some of those, the non-emboldened, which are the state requirements, were those more subjective, or were those pretty just the same?
Yeah, let me take kind of the quick overview of the process. So the committee of people that meets is on the top, yeah.
I understand the process.
Okay, and- but it is a yes or no, do they meet? But they get a ti- a second time. So let's say they had all yeses and had one or two smaller things missing, the ability to go and say, you know, no, we need to see this, but there's no judgment on whether it's good or not, it's only about whether it's there. So they get a second chance, regardless of whether Ken was in charge of it or Joe, because it's what's outlined in our policy.
Okay. Also, I was wondering, I think that I remember from before, like, a year or two ago when we had our last charter application, that they felt like that we failed them on things that they had taken from other charters that we had passed, and so they didn't understand how they had gotten failed on- on parts of their application that we mirrored or copied of the charter schools. Is that something that is a possibility, and is that something that's addressed when we give them their review, on their first review?
Well, it's a distinct possibility that applicants might feel that, but unless we actually went back to look at each individual question that might have been at issue and compared it with other charter schools, it may or may not have made sense for one charter school versus another. So without really understanding the specifics, I couldn't answer the question. But do applicants feel like this is- can be a hard process? Absolutely. There's a lot of information that we, as a district, and you as a board, are requesting, and the charter review committee takes that seriously. We're going to read it, and we're going to study it, and we're going to comment on it.
And I could attempt a fast walk through the rest of the agenda if we'd like to cover those items.
What I'm going to suggest is we just get through number four, overview of the application process, and skip five and six.
Okay.
Let them go through this.
All right. The only thing I would add, and certainly Paul and Rebecca have deep legal knowledge and experience working with charters, the only thing I would add is that our timelines established in order for an approved viable charter school, if approved by the school board, to be able to launch a startup for the following fall. And so our timelines walk backwards from there, our October deadline, the review process for completeness, then if deemed complete, the substantive review that would come to the board, the board recommendation, and then the negotiation. It's a pretty timely processed- process that must be adhered to. And so one of the crunches that appears is that if an application is deemed incomplete, and it goes back to the applicant, they really have to turn that application around pretty quickly. And so if that second application is not complete, that's where we kind of stop the process for the year and come to you and say, hey, we're deeming this application incomplete, because we have to look at timelines and getting set up to launch an effective school in the fall, and we haven't even done a substantive review yet. So that's the process that happens if a applicant is deemed incomplete a second time, and why we stop at number two attempt, is in order to honor those timelines for fall. The other thing I would share is, the committee process is a very intensive, extensive time investment for staff. I don't think we see it as workload, more than just a really important part of our work. The committee is formed by the many level directors that are in the district, our student services director, Mr. Wolf, Mr. Carlisle, myself, legal counsel, staff from technology, staff from the curriculum department. It is a deep investment of staff time. I would estimate four to six hours just to review one application, to read through thoroughly one application, and that's not counting the time together as a committee to go through that rubric. The wisdom at the table is really evident in the review process, when we've reviewed a complete application, or a submitted application, I should say, and we come to that table for those conversations with colleagues, and mine the professional wisdom that we gather in our district. Our district has a unique process with the investment we put forward with staff time and the staff that are involved in a charter review committee. So you have entrusted that to a committee of staff, and we gather a lot of wisdom at the table with significant years in the work that they do. So I think that's an important piece to focus on. I think Paul and Rebecca reviewed the two components for an application, and so unless there's further questions, I go on to the overview for existing charters, unless we want to stop right there.
I think we're getting close on time, but I know there's- maybe we open it up. I know Paul has a question on five A, so maybe we can open up for a few questions, and then we can decide whether to come back to those last two agenda items.
We get five more minutes, because we have to leave staff time to draw this room back together for the regular meeting.
So, quickly, we put all this time in the application process and reviewing it, and I have been a part of some of those, and that's great. But what about after they are approved? How often are we out monitoring? And when are the reports coming back if there are problems? Because I was involved in one once upon a time, and I can say some names that would cause Paul and probably Ruth Gilbert to shudder, because we were involved in that. But where's that at?
Yeah, and just real quickly, that's that oversight process, Paul, and I would say that there are probably four processes in place. Every fall, the existing school submits an annual audit, in this case, to the level offices, which is reviewed by staff there. They submit quarterly financial statements, which are reviewed by Mike's office in the fiscal department.
I trust the financial- I'm talking about safety of kids, I'm talking about actual delivery.
Right, and then the third component is the actual site visits, where a supervisor visits the school on a regular basis. And then a fourth oversight that I think is unique to our school district is, we are unique in that all of our existing schools use district staff. And so those principals are supervised by level directors, those teachers are supervised by district staff. So I think our uniqueness in charter employees being school district employees is unique to Salem Kaiser, and that's probably our largest area where we have consistent oversight. And it's- that's not common amongst other districts.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I still have concerns about it, but I'm sure that the process is ongoing, and the two more quick points. Do we have anybody who monitors the lottery for participation in a charter school to make sure that they are actually impartial? So for example, a severely handicapped student could actually attend a charter school.
I'd have to research how we do that. I know that it's part of the contract, the selection process.
Yeah, but do we monitor? That's my question.
Yeah, I'd want to get more detail for that.
Level directors monitor it.
Okay.
Monitor the lottery process.
Thank you.
And I think if there were a dispute, it would also come to the level directors over the lottery process.
Is there one more, Paul? Do you have one more, Jeff?
I just want to make the comment that in addition to curriculum, even if they provide the same curriculum as- as one of our school districts' schools, sometimes they also have a- they have a different environment, different style, different set of people that they're serving, like different focus group that they're on. Sometimes they just have other creativities that make them unique. So it's not just a curriculum that makes the charter school appeal- appealing to people in the district, so. I think that's part of the creativity, I mean, it seemed like they're really useful as far as trying to develop new curriculum and testing stuff.
You're right, it's not just a curriculum, sometimes it's an environment that's different. Yep, agreed.
Okay, we're gonna- I'm going to adjourn this meeting, because we have to get set up for our business meeting.
There is board appreciation cake over there, if you didn't get one, you might want to grab one while we're setting up.
Okay, I'd like to call the January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please, Christie.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Nancy McMorrisodics.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jeff Fayetteville.
Here.
Jim Green.
Here.
Paul Kylo.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
Thank you, Christie. Agenda modifications, we don't have any tonight, so we'll move on to spotlights on success.
Good evening. Our first spotlight tonight to be- is the volunteer of the month, and Karina Lee is going to give us.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. G., Phil Gillette, and the principal of Forest Ridge Elementary, Mariah Culligan, to come forward, please. Collusion, I didn't say that right, I'm sorry. Okay. Affectionately known as Mr. G., Phil Gillette has been the ultra-volunteer for the Forest Ridge Elementary community for several years. He even brought his own cheerleading squad. Come on up. Each day, after his crossing guard duties, he checks in and makes his way to A pod and into room A three. Phil precisely records the minutes read, homework assignments completed, and basic math fact fluency progression. math fact fluency progression, all the while encouraging the students to follow through on their responsibility as learners, both at school and at home. He continues throughout the rest of the day supporting the learning of individual students and small groups with patience and with the expectation that all students can learn. His relationship with the students is impressive, and the students know that he believes in them. Several students wrote testimony to Mr. G.'s making a difference for them. They all stated that Mr. G. does so many things like being the crossing guard than volunteering every day at school, helping with math, checking the Read at Home folders and their homework. Each of the students wrote they will never forget Mr. G. or the help he gave them. Forest Ridge staff members say Mr. G. is a man who gives of himself on a daily basis for all the right reasons. He wants to be a support to teachers, to students, and the school community. He embodies the spirit of a true volunteer at the school by helping the students be successful on their journey through education. The Forest Ridge School community feels it is stronger because of Mr. G.'s support and are extremely thankful to him, as so are we.
All right, our next presenter is Jay Reamy with the Business Partner of the Month.
Thank you Superintendent Perry, Chair Kimball, and members of the board. If I could get Four Corners Principal Phil Decker to come up along with Tanya Johnson and others from the Extension Service from Oregon State University. The January Business Partner of the Month is OSU Extension Service. Nominated by Four Corners, students have learned about healthy eating through engaging nutrition lessons and food preparation demonstrations. As the OSU Extension team focuses on an East Salem corridor, Air and Chavez Elementary Schools are also participating. Students and teachers look forward to monthly visits by trained health educators who come into their classrooms and encourage healthy eating habits. OSU health educators maintain a bulletin board just outside the Four Corners cafeteria to highlight other health topics such as exercise, the importance of drinking water instead of beverages with high sugar content, and gardening. At Four Corners Family Nights, OSU health educators set up shop in the cafeteria to provide families with cooking demonstrations, recipes, and hands-on activities. OSU Extension collaborated with the school's school climate team to pilot a school nutrition and physical activity environment assessment to identify areas of strength and opportunities for change. As a result, the Four Corners team is working on a concept called Food Hero Friday, where staff supervising in the cafeteria would hand out Food Hero tickets to students who are actually eating their veggies. Students could then win prizes such as water bottles, t-shirts, or a Food Hero cape. The Four Corners community feels fortunate to have the ongoing support of the Oregon State University Extension Nutrition Education Program to help prepare their students for a healthy future. Congratulations and thanks to the Extension Service for being our Business Partner of the Month. And as they're leaving, if I could make one other quick announcement. As you may know, Queenie Wong with the Statesman Journal got a new job at the San Jose Mercury News, and so Josie DeWitt is here, and she is the new education reporter. She's been at the Statesman for a few years, but she's new to the school's beat. So make sure you say hi to Josie after the meeting, and we look forward to working with her. Welcome, Josie. Thank you.
Our last spotlight will be presented by Miracritzer.
Could I have Julie Cleve and Principal Jan Van Slander up to the front? Julie Cleve, a first grade teacher at Holman Elementary, was selected for the 2014 Milken Educator Award. At a special school assembly held on December 11th, Julie was surprised with the award by the Milken Family Foundation. Julie was one of the 40 educators across the country to receive the award and the only recipient from Oregon. Milken Family Foundation Chairman Lowell Milken established the Milken Educator Awards to provide public recognition and individual financial rewards of $25,000 to elementary and secondary teachers, principals, and specialists who are furthering excellence in education. Julie works tirelessly to provide the stability and creativity that her students need to get their young lives off to the best possible start. Despite the high percentage of disadvantaged students at Holman, Julie meets the students where they are academically and developmentally to help them exceed all expectations. Julie believes that all of her students are capable of great things. Julie is also recognized as a leader who helps create an atmosphere of success for everyone in the building. She is a sought-after mentor and valued for her ability to be kind and fair when making decisions or giving counsel. Salem Kaiser Schools is very fortunate to have such an outstanding educator and mentor among us all. Congratulations, Julie.
I think they're hoping for a picture with them. We have a Holman t-shirt on.
Yes, yes.
I was at the ceremony. I bought it.
Okay, we move on to our next agenda item, which is action items. Excuse me, audience communications. And at this point in the agenda, we have audience communication on topics that are on the agenda. Limit your comments to three minutes, please, and when you get to the podium, if you can give your name and address for the record before you give your three-minute presentation, that would be very good. We're using lights on timing. When the orange light comes on, you have one minute left. When the red light up here comes on, your three minutes are up. First on the, we have one person signed up, Scott Guptill. Scott, are you still here?
On behalf of Capital Preparatory, I want to say thank you to Superintendent Perry and Chairperson Kimball for having the opportunity for charter schools to be an option in the Salem Kaiser area. We have been on the ground floor of developing this charter school and have a lot of community members that have expressed interest, and the process has been a learning one for us as a steering committee. We wanted to say that Capital Preparatory is going to be based on a PIDEA model of education. This is a Socratic method of seminar, question and answer. So students would be given the opportunity to develop critical thinking skills that help develop lifelong learners. With this method, also allows us to reach all students within the classroom rather than just a select group. The seminars teach students how to think through problems through a education in the round, if you will, so that those respect of disagreement of opinions and ideas can be then for expressed, especially before doing writing assignments or other assessments. We have been in contact with the founder of PIDEA, and his name is Terry Roberts. He's written several books on the subject and the different success stories of this method, and we look forward to continuing that relationship with the Salem Kaiser School Board as we move forward in creating the proposal that would be acceptable within the district. So thank you very much for your evening.
Thank you, Scott. That's all that have signed up. Is there anybody who did not have a chance to sign up that wants to speak on an agenda item today? Come forward, please, and if you can state your name and address for the record, three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Laura Edwards. My address is 939 Cascade Drive Northwest, Salem, Oregon 97304. And I'm here because I'm excited about the opportunity for another charter school in our area. We have been unsuccessful in trying to get our kids into a charter school just because the demand is higher than the availability. My kids are, I believe, intelligent, talented people, but I think that the opportunity for a different delivery system and learning style would be beneficial to most of them. I just want more options for some of the challenges that we're facing in our home. And I did research on this charter school that's presented today, and I like the model that they're talking about, and I think that it would serve at least one of my kids right now. And I have eight kids, so he's my oldest, so we'd just be kind of bumping down the line on eligibility over here. But we, my husband and myself are just looking for options on getting our kids engaged in what they're learning and what they're doing in school, and it just seems like this model is something that really engages a child who might be just kind of sitting in the back of the classroom in a normal setting. And forgive me, I had notes prepared, and we got here by the skin of our teeth, so my notes are gone. But I am here to support this charter school. I really hope that it happens because we just, our family is looking for alternative solutions to some of the challenges we're facing at home, and this looks like it for us. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Who do you have with you there, anyway?
This is Daniel.
Hi, Daniel. Anybody else who didn't get a chance to sign up? Could you come forward, please, and name and address for the record?
My name is Gianna Medina. My address is 4834 Gardner Road Southeast, Salem, Oregon 97302. I am speaking. I have a daughter that is currently enrolled in a charter school in Salem, and we've had a lot of success with it. She is actually a high achiever and a high test scorer, and I found that with the school that we were in, we weren't getting the time that she needed because she was actually doing okay, and I felt like she was just kind of getting put on the back burner because she didn't need extra attention and extra help. And that's not the case with the charter school that we're at now, and they're helping her continue to advance even though she is one of the higher achiever students in our class. And as I look to the options for the next level for her, the two charter schools in Salem Kaiser have over 300 kids on the waiting list, and it's just a scary thought to think that that might not be an option for us when we've had so much success right now with our charter school. And so I just would like more options to be available because I really find that the school that we're at has given us a lot of success.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Anybody else who didn't have a chance to sign up ahead of time? Okay, we'll move on with our agenda into the action items. We have one item for action tonight, and that's a resolution to support the Promise of Oregon. This resolution comes to us from the Oregon School Board Association, and I'm going to read it here, then I'll entertain a motion. This is the Resolution, the Promise of Oregon Resolution. Whereas this state's children constitute the Promise of Oregon through their potential as thinkers, leaders, and caretakers of their generation and the future, and whereas we believe funding a strong system of public education is the best investment Oregonians can make to strengthen our economy, create thriving communities, and improve the quality of life for every Oregonian. And whereas we support a well-rounded curriculum that meets the needs of Oregon students, including a variety of electives and co-curricular activities, and whereas we must ensure that efforts to close the academic achievement gap and support for students who have been historically underserved are expanded, and whereas Oregon's public schools have experienced a prolonged period of unstable and inadequate funding that has resulted in dire consequences, thousands of teachers and staff layoffs, unacceptably large class sizes, and one of the shortest school years in the country. And whereas the 2013 through 15 budget marked the beginning of a turnaround in school funding, the 2015 legislative session will provide whether that turnaround will continue forward or stall. And whereas Oregon's political leadership has codified an ambitious 40-40-20 goal for our education system to reach by the year 2025, which requires a significant financial investment to attain. And whereas the case must be made to Oregon's voters that the legislature needs to prioritize investments in full-day kindergarten, a full school year for every student in every district, and modern, safe school facilities in every community in our state. And whereas the school board members need to help shoulder the responsibility for making the case to Oregon's voters that the investments must be made so that every child has the opportunity to become a responsible and productive citizen of our state. Now therefore be it resolved that the Salem Kaiser School District's Board of Education pledges to join and support the efforts of the Promise of Oregon campaign to ensure that Oregon's lawmakers continue to prioritize investments to improve the educational outcomes for Oregon's greatest natural resource, our children. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Paul, second by Nancy for approval. Is there any discussion on this side? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Unanimous, Kristi? Thank you.
Can I ask a question before we move on?
Yes, Kristi.
Do you have any thoughts or direction on how you'd like us to incorporate this into any sort of our existing media channels? So through our Facebook or website or any of that? Do you have some direction for us?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jim.
There is a Facebook page for the Promise of Oregon, and if we could link to that and the picture that was taken before the board, if you could put that on the district's Facebook page, put it on our website, I'd request that as a board member.
Anybody else? Nancy?
I might, you know, the initial video that we saw at our last meeting had a number of students talking, and I think making the, making teachers of communications or journalism classes at the secondary level aware of the campaign and, you know, seeing if it fit into the curriculum. I'm not saying mandate it, but just put it out there that it's a possibility for something that students could do projects on.
Good idea. Chris?
The only thing I would ask is as this campaign that OSBA has undertaken progresses, I'm glad that we supported it this evening, I would just ask that our own personal liaison with OSBA keep us really aware of things that the board might be doing to support the effort.
As well as our electors to the legislative policy committees that serve off this board, Chris.
Nice turnaround.
Any other comments or, okay. Does that give you some guidance?
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda is the adoption of the consent calendar, and this, tonight we have one business item and a couple personnel action items, and traditionally we adopt this all in one motion unless a school board member wants to pull an item to discuss. Nancy?
I'd like to pull 4A1.
4A1. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent calendar, 4B, 1 and 2.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, second?
Second.
Second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nancy, do you have some discussion on 4A1?
Yeah, I just noticed in the list of grants, there is, the first one is Kindergarten Readiness Partnership, an innovative grant to student services that I understand.
Readiness Partnership and Innovative Grant to Student Services that I understood is part of the Marion Polk County Early Learning Hub. And I would just like to learn more about that and see what it is, how we're working together to move these kids forward.
If you're okay, Ruth has just a couple comments about that.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Chair President Kimball, Superintendent Perry, thank you for this opportunity to talk about this. Kindergarten Partnership and Innovation Grant. Nine of our schools, Four Corners, Grant, Hallman, Hayesville, Highland, Hoover, Scotts, Wiggles, and Washington, received and were recipients of a one-year grant focused on high-priority elementary areas. They were selected by the hub because they had high poverty levels, high levels of ELLs, and schools with students who score below the state standards in reading at grade three. They received $4,000 to engage families in school readiness events, and $7,000 apiece for evidence-based or promising practices, pre-K3 professional development activities. It's a lot of welcome support to the schools. The outcome, of course, is to increase the children's readiness for kindergarten as measured by the Oregon Kindergarten Assessment, to strengthen the connections between early learning and K-12, to expand an innovative model for early learning that has potential to be replicated across our community, and to engage families as key partners. So the people, the schools that participate in the parent caregiver survey, they'll create a plan for kindergarten readiness activities and will attend the P3 Advisory Board. And I brought my favorite specialist here to bring you specifics if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Stephanie, do you have some examples?
No, just, I would just echo what Ruth said. We're excited about the opportunity to partner with our Early Learning Hub for Marion and soon-to-be Polk County. I think there's, our schools are doing lots of great things partnering together for joint PLCs between our pre-K and our kindergarten staff, which is exciting, getting them to have some conversations about curriculum and planning and that pre-K3 alignment.
Nancy?
I just want to comment. You know, I've always thought that having a community that, you know, across the board understands what kindergarten readiness looks like, that we would just be further along that line. So having the opportunity to really look at what, you know, this isn't a huge amount of money, but seeing what an investment that's really targeted in those communities, see what works, and see how we can spread out amongst the community. When we started talking about kindergarten readiness, I thought, you know, like, what are they talking about? You know, I mean, the specific kinds of things that I, as a parent, I don't have a preschooler, but if I did, what are those things that I would do? And have just a real clear understanding that these are the kinds of behaviors and knowledge and skills that we would like to see coming into kindergarten. Because I think every parent wants their kid to be successful, and the more that knowledge is out there, the more likely we are to get there. So I just want to really applaud your work, and I hope that we get to here later, the endpoint, to see how it's going, or that's, I guess, the middle point.
I'd like to send, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ken, before you leave, to tie this in maybe to the resolution that we adopted, the Early Learning Hub, Inc., this is part of the 40-40-20 effort. This is trying to make the leap from pre-K, get them ready for kindergarten. So these funds are actually state funds coming through the Early Learning Hub, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, any more questions on that? Okay, Nancy moves adoption of 4A1, the grant budget. Second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Kristi? Okay, let's move on to readings. We have one reading tonight, and our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Ken Partialwell, will handle that for us tonight. Ken?
And I just want to remind you, this is reading number one of two, so we won't ask for action tonight. If there's some questions, detail-type questions that he can't answer, we'll circle back with the answers to those before your second reading and present those answers at the board.
Great. Chair Kimball, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. The developers of the Capital Preparatory School submitted a charter proposal to the district. The district's charter review committee reviewed the application for completeness and deemed it incomplete. Using the district's charter review rating scale, the application was returned to the applicant with those items deemed incomplete noted. The applicant resubmitted a second application. The committee deemed the second application is incomplete also. Those items which were deemed incomplete by the committee are listed in your board packet. Two of those are components of Oregon law, and the additional components that were deemed incomplete are identified by the district in our charter handbook. Since the application was not considered complete as outlined in the application review process, no further steps were taken by the committee to complete, or excuse me, to complete an evaluation of the merits of the application. The superintendent recommends that the school board concurb with the findings of the committee and make the determination that the Capital Preparatory School proposal is not complete because it does not minimally address all of the required elements. The item is being brought to you for first reading and will be returned for action as stated by Superintendent Perry in February.
Okay, questions? Chris?
This is more a clarification than anything else. My understanding is that this is sort of breaking new ground for us. In the past, we have always had, after some work between the district and the charter school, a complete application. And so our consideration was always about whether it met the criteria that we expected for a charter school in our district. This time, we're not there yet. We're simply, at this point, saying that it's deemed incomplete, and what are the options for the charter school at that point?
Correct. And so in past, we have brought to you a recommendation to approve or deny following a substantive review. And so the applicant is welcome to apply by the deadline next fall with our district.
Is there an appeal process of any kind from your consideration?
Not with the district, but to the state.
And this is a slight change in procedure with the board, to have the board review both, act on both step one and step two. Is that correct, Paul?
Right. We have had situations where you've looked at proposals that may not be complete, but we've got them to you, and we've said, okay, well, they're as complete as they can be. I think what we did with this is to do our process, and then what we became concerned about is since there's an appeal process under the law to the State Board of Education, we really didn't want the charter developers to get in this spin cycle where the state board says, well, this hasn't been run by your board, the board hasn't looked at it, only the charter review committee has looked at it. We thought, there's some ambiguity in the law on this point. And so we thought in an abundance of caution and in deference to the applicants, we'd let you look at this, see what you thought. You have delegated to the charter review committee this part of the review through the superintendent's office, but we thought this was the right way to go on this particular issue.
Chris, go ahead.
That being said, truth be known, we, as a board, have not actually looked at the application. What we have in front of us is a list of those areas that were deemed incomplete with a little explanation from the committee as to what was there or wasn't there. So at this point, we, as a board, have not actually seen the proposal to see if we agree with that. We're not experts. We wouldn't be the people to agree or disagree with whether it's complete. So we're sort of, you know, being led through this process. Would it be appropriate if one of us wanted to actually see an example of an incomplete? Can we ask for that between now and the next meeting, to be able to look at it and say, that's what incomplete looks like?
Sure. And you have in the board packet the actual rating scale, so you can see.
Which ones?
Which ones are, where there's no, they didn't include that information.
So Director Brantley, for example, if you look at the rubric that was utilized by the charter review committee, for example, if you look at, I'm on number 73, it says "documentation of how the public charter school will comply with TSBC requirements for all staff, including all TSBC Oregon administrative rules pertaining to its staff." And in there, one of those standards is the ethical educator rules, and so there's no mention of that. So every one of those standards must be mentioned and minimally addressed, and so if it's not there, we can't deem the application complete. Another example is, as we know, there's high-stakes testings that takes place in all of our schools every year. And so one of the requirements is that the applicant complete a testing schedule, because we need to know what's the schedule look like for those high-stakes tests that we measure student progress on. And in the application, there was no testing schedule. And so if any one of the components listed in the rubric are not included, it's really difficult for our committee to deem it minimally addressed.
Thank you. That helps me a bunch, because, as I say, we can't, we haven't actually seen it, but to hear your examples, these are literally not there, and they're required to be there.
Another, one more, just to share another one that's really clear to understand. As teachers are licensed in our state, they're required to earn a number of professional development units every year in order to be relicensed with the state. We call those CPDU, professional development units. And so the applicant must describe what their plan is to ensure that licensed teachers are able to earn those professional development units and therefore be relicensed at the state. And so if there's no description of that, which in this case there wasn't, how are your licensed teachers going to earn those professional development units? Then we, another example of why we couldn't deem the application complete. And so the rubric kind of should show you there, anything that was coded in, is that that was not minimally addressed.
So, just to clarify, so it's not a matter of that it was so minimal as to not be there? It's a matter of it wasn't there?
Yeah, not on every item. And one of the difficulties is, was it minimally addressed? Was it listed? Was it mentioned? So we rely on the expertise of that charter review committee to decipher, okay, was that minimally addressed? Is it addressing the standard, or was it just listed or appeared in the text? So there's some professional conversations that take place in that charter review committee to help us decide, is it addressed or is it just listed?
So can I summarize? The application came through the review committee once, got sent back to the applicant for some areas that were missing, went back to the review committee again, and there's some that were not minimally addressed and some that were just absent still.
Correct. And so the first application had more items that were incomplete. And the applicant did a really good job of addressing many of those items, and there was a lot to address in a short timeline, because they're wanting to open next fall. And so in defense of the applicant, they did a really nice job of getting some of those items addressed. But if they're not all addressed in that second process, we can't deem the process complete.
That helps a lot.
Yeah.
Jim?
So I'm reading the board plate here, Ken, and one of the questions I have is, you state when we received the original application that we deemed incomplete, when did we receive the resubmitted complaint?
That came in following our review, and I believe it was November. It was not quite in time for us to get our committee together in time to get it into the December meeting.
Okay. And that follows up to my second question, which may be more of a Paul question or a Superintendent Perry question, is, my understanding is, Paul, what you're asking tonight, or what staff is asking, is the review committee said doesn't meet, they resubmitted it, and you're asking the board, not at this reading, but at our second reading, that we would determine, yes, it's not complete in light of the committee work that we delegated their authority to. Would that then mean they would appeal that decision, they can appeal that decision to the state board as to whether it's a complete application and whether we followed the process in which the district has laid out in deeming it a complete application? By doing that, it would then be impossible slash impractical for the applicant to start school next year. So you're looking at them potentially hitting that next cycle of application process for the Salem Kaiser School District. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right. And, you know, at this stage, an applicant can say, we might as well wait and just refine our work for next year and just deal with the school board again. Or they could say, we'll appeal it to the state board. The state board has the power to remand the proposal back to you to relook at the completeness issue.
And it's only on that issue, though, right, Paul? It's only on that issue of whether it's complete or not. They're not appealing it for sponsorship at the state board at that time.
Right. That would be the next, Jeff, but we're not there yet.
And without appealing to ODE, the applicant is welcome to reapply by the October 1st deadline for the following year also.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
If, this is for you, I guess. I think so, anyway. So we send it back to them because there is a number of things that weren't, that weren't complete. And then they resubmitted it, they tried to address everything, and obviously they seemed to have missed some different spots on the application. So if they were to not submit it now, and they were to back off for another year, would we help them, or would we, in any way, to have it so that it actually is complete next time around? Or would it be kind of like a minefield where they think they got it all again, and they might miss something or not address something as thoroughly as you want to see?
Well, part of the process is that the developer describe the expertise and knowledge and skill set that they have to start and run a school. And so while we want to be helpful and kind to applicants, we also don't want to write the proposal for them. We can't say, here's what it should look like. And so that's the delicate part of that answer. We want to be helpful. Our rubric in our charter school handbook is very helpful. Not all districts provide all that information to the applicant. And so it should be a guide that's carefully outlined. If you look at your rubric, it describes kind of the standard, and then they have to describe what that would look like for them in their school. That's difficult for us to describe for them, other than to refer to the process, answer questions, and try to be as helpful as we can in that process.
So an example might be that they say, they might say to us, help me understand high-stakes testing. And we could say, you know, we use, the test is smarter balanced, here's the direction to the resources that describe some of that, so we could kind of direct, here's where you could learn more about that. We would do that, right?
We may do that. Yeah, we're not required to, but we may do that, yes.
Wait, Jeff, you done, or you?
Not quite.
Go ahead, follow up.
So with some of these things that are state requirements, like with the testing, that they have a testing schedule. It seems like, so there was, were our, okay, I think I can boil it down. Obviously, when we gave them their review, their first review, and we gave them the results of that, they went back and they tried to identify each of those different areas. Are those areas broad enough where they think that they missed, let's say, number six because of item, because they thought they didn't have that thorough enough? But really, there is 10 different things in number six that could have been their failure. So obviously, they brought it back to you thinking that they had addressed every single one of those, but obviously, it wasn't complete. So it seems like there's either a lot of subjectivity to it, or it's broad enough, because this was the same complaint we had, I think, a year ago, when we had the last one that we turned down, that they felt like it was a minefield going through it. Is it, is it all like that?
The process that came to the board a year ago was in the substantive review, and so we've not yet gone to a substantive review until this applicant would be complete, this application would be deemed complete. So if it's not complete, which is, this application that we're talking about is not complete yet, when a complete application is received, then we would go to that substantive review that you're referring to, and that's where we kind of judge the content, is this a viable school to open next fall?
Paul, go ahead.
Just one suggestion I had. I mean, the Oregon Department of Education also has, you know, charter proposals and individual school districts do too. So there's, I think there's other places for help for applicants. I think this is particularly tricky, because often applicants don't know what they don't know that they need. So when they're asked for a discipline policy, and they say, well, we'll follow an Oregon Lawford discipline, and I'm not saying that that's what they did in this case, but I've seen that before. It's, yes, you wrote a sentence about it, but you don't actually know what needs to be included. You don't understand it enough. And we need applicants to understand. And we need applicants to understand what they need. And so there are, there certainly, I believe that there are, that there's charter school development help out there for charter school applicants to really hone their proposals so they cover what they need to know.
I actually think there's a professional organization that helps and that charter schools across the state are connected through it somehow.
Nancy, did you?
I just wanted to say that it looks me on the rubric, like there's really specific statements about what's missing. So it's, it's not like it's being handed back to them with, you know, find a rock. It's not, nope, you didn't make it. You're really very specific about saying, this is not described, this is not described adequately, or you missed this piece of it, or whatever seems really clear in the rubric when I look at it.
Jeff.
I just want to get your opinion. So do you feel like, like some of these things were too broad? Some of these different requirements that they and the previous charter school felt like they had addressed, but then we have deemed them not to have addressed, to the minimal requirement that they should, nor for us to approve it. Do you feel like these requirements are too broad so they've not, so they're not sure of what they're supposed to do? Or do you feel like, or do you feel like it's more subjective that you want to see that they are demonstrating a certain level of knowledge? Like if they address it by just giving you the, that answer from a different charter that we've approved or something like that. And so they feel like, here, we give you the black letter answer that you want, but they don't demonstrate the knowledge. So is it more, so is it something that you don't feel like they have the knowledge or skill set, or you don't feel like they give you the correct answer?
Well, in the review process, we're not, we're not judging their skill set or knowledge. We're just simply judging the completeness, the evidence is provided in the application to the rubric. And we have to see evidence of that. And we've gathered significant experience around the table from a variety of areas. And there's much discussion about, is it minimally addressed? Usually, we deem it not minimally addressed when there is, the entire component is missing or when a part of that component is missing.
So I want to, I want to just follow up here too, to go back to what Salem Kaiser has learned about starting charter schools is that if we can really help charter schools on the front end, be really strong in their application, because we know running schools is hard work and complicated work. If we can really help them on the front end, that they give us a really complete application, and then substantially, it's a strong application, then they have a greater likelihood of success. And I think several of you have closed a charter school as I have. And that's, it's way worse to close it than to do, take a little time to make sure it's really strong on the front end. So that's my philosophy, but I think that's also what people have learned. So it feels hard, and it is hard, because we also know that opening and running a school is hard. So we want to be sure that we really get all the pieces. But right now, some of them weren't there.
Paul, you had a question?
What grade level, what grade level is this?
Middle school.
Middle school, okay. We didn't see that anywhere in the paperwork, so, thank you.
Chuck, did you have?
Well, that was my question too, and did they have a location determined?
Not yet.
You got some space down there?
Just curious.
Sorry, Chuck.
However, that's fairly common for them to, you know, to not have a site.
Well, it looked to me in their, in the ratings, that there's a Y next to that question.
Correct, yeah, they had done some, some research on that already.
Okay, any more questions tonight, we will. This is not an action night, we'll have more time for discussion later. Is there anything pressing tonight? Jeff, you got anything else you need to ask? Everybody good, okay, so this will come back next month?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is reports, we have three reports tonight. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry for the first one.
All right, this is executive limitation number seven, budget and financial planning. And rather than reading it to you, because these have been really similar across the time, I will tell you, there were no evidences of non-compliance. And I want to add that this is, this budget and financial planning, some of the wording is going to be trickier and tougher financial times. So if you look at, number one, is not consistent with the board established priorities as established in the results policies. When times are better, that's easier to meet within the budget. So I just wanted to note that, something you already know. But again, there were no non-compliance issues across any of the financial pieces. What I also want to tell you, mine, absent of this report, as a new superintendent coming in, the financial workings of this district are really in good shape. I met with the auditors personally this year and got some really excellent feedback about our staff, our internal controls. So in addition to this, I just want you to know, from an outside lens looking in, you have really strong procedures, you have great budget, we have great budget analysis, we have strong support for the organization financially. And I believe there's a really strong system in place. It makes it easier to meet your priorities in these better budget times. And so hopefully, we'll be having that going forward as well. So do you have any questions on the executive limitation number seven?
Questions? Okay, I don't see any on these executive limitations. I look for consensus thumbs up, is this adequate report? Okay. All right, let's move on to the second item for report. And Chief Operating Officer, Mike Wolf, will handle this topic.
Good evening, Chair Kimball, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. So tonight, I'll give you a brief update on the strategic goal that's related to the redesign of the facilities improvement process, which includes identification prioritization and delivery of projects to enhance student achievement and success. This item's been on, I would say, about four years since I've been here. It's been on the strategic plan in various versions as we move through the process. I'm happy to report that we've actually implemented the system. And we knew that clearly, this has been always a focus of facilities to take a look at the identification prioritization and delivery of improvements. The bond has really helped refocus the efforts because with over a quarter of a billion dollar investment in infrastructure, you really want to make sure you've got the systems in place to maintain and sustain them over time. And as we reported to the board in April of 2014, the facilities improvement and large movement process, FILM, was identified as a subject of a root cause analysis improvement project. And that process was led by our chief, chief of staff, Mary Poulson, in partnership with lean Six Sigma experts from Intel, and also included key stakeholders and the district's management review team, part of the QAM model. The goal of the project was a redesigned facilities improvement process that included streamlining with a renewed customer service focus, clearly defined roles and responsibilities for facility staff as well as customers, integration of facilities and technology work order processes, prioritization criteria aligned with enhancing student achievement, staff success, and refocused implementation of the automated maintenance management system. And so the redesigned facilities improvement process was initially tested during the summer of 2014. And we identified significant follow-on improvements to the automation system that we needed to implement for the, for all of these goals to be met. And so we have all of the supporting flow charts, decision matrices, we have procedural descriptions, work instructions. And we are actually implementing as we speak. And the full system will be operational throughout the district in February of 2015, next month. So we're pretty pleased about that. It's been a long road, but we feel good about where we are. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions, anybody? Chris?
I just have a comment, it comes from our CTE committee that we met with. And, you know, as we're involved in this public-private partnership, and one of the interesting little tidbits of our conversation last week was that both sides of that partnership are having some difficulties with the other side based on what we know to be a good educational facility and the fact that we're building it with other people's money. We're not building it with our own money. And so there have been these discrepancies about, why can't we just do it that way? Well, because our system is built. And so I guess what my, my comment is, is your system is working. There is a definite set of standards that we now have as a district about what our facilities are going to look like and how they're going to be maintained. And when you start working with a public-private partnership, there apparently can be some little boondoggles in that. But according to our liaison with Mountain West, we're getting by them. So, and it's being built, so all is well.
Great.
Any other questions or comments, okay? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Our last report tonight is our Director of Student Services, Ruth Gilbrecht, is going to lead that presentation.
I'd like to reintroduce you to the Coordinator of Early Childhood Programs, Stephanie Wetzel. And her Assistant Coordinator is Sophia Durst. I just want you to see some faces, and she's going to do the report for us tonight.
Good evening, Chair person Kimball, Superintendent Perry, and members of the board. Head Start performance standards require us to provide information to our school board three times per year. I'm here this evening just to speak a little bit about Head Start report that was included in the board plate. A couple of highlights for this school year. We wanted to let you know, we're at capacity and fully enrolled in all classrooms. We received expansion funding from Oregon Department of Education for an additional 26 students this year, so that puts us at a total of 306 students. Salem Kaiser Head Start provides a comprehensive program supporting students in all areas. We're working hard, our curriculum is aligned to Common Core state standards. Staff members are working to build those critical early literacy and math skills that we talked about a little bit earlier with the kindergarten assessment and the P3 partnership. Parents are involved throughout our program. I wanted to recognize, I think some have moved to the hall, but we have some Head Start parents who are here this evening. And this fall, we had a parent representative who was selected to represent Head Start parents throughout the state. So we're excited about that. If anyone has any questions on the submitted report, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Jim?
I just have one, you've listed the schools here that we have, the nine classrooms. Are those, are the kids that are in the program, the 306, only in those catch areas for those school districts, or they come district wide?
So we share our boundary area with community action Head Start. So we serve, they serve Kaiser, West Salem, and kind of Central Salem. And we serve South Salem, Central, and kind of Southeast. So we have a service area with them, kind of by boundaries, and so we serve by elementary catchment area.
Okay.
And those aren't necessarily the catchment areas of the schools that are listed. So if you live in Andalaria and qualify for Head Start, then you would get put into one of these.
Transportation to Shirley. Or if you live at Wright, we would provide services at the nearest. So we tell parents, our ideal is to have classroom at the elementary school of the child, but sometimes we've had to go to kind of the closest site that we have available. So we'll group a couple of sites together, and then we'll be at one elementary.
I have my usual question.
Go ahead, Nancy, and then Chris.
So the waiting list of 72 students, that seems smaller than we've had in the past because we've expanded the spots. With a waiting list of 72 students, is there likelihood that any percentage of those that you could predict from past history will get in? Or some years, half of them get in, and some years, none of them get in?
It depends on the year. Sometimes different classrooms will have higher mobility, and we enroll throughout the year. So if a student moves out of the area or relocates, then we'll enroll a new student into that space. It is a little bit lower, our waiting list. We've found that that's not just for our Head Start program, but kind of throughout the state. So we don't know if it's because there was a little bit of expansion funding available and we're getting the word out a little more, that, that's a good thing, that our waiting list has decreased a little bit.
Chris?
I actually have two. The first one is, there, as I read about the implementation of Common Core and Smarter Balanced and all those kinds of things, if I read one area where there seems to be more flaming going on around whether or not the standards are appropriate and those kinds of things, it's in early childhood. And there's sort of this perception that a group of people got together primarily sort of looking at the end product. And if we're going to create these people that are these really good workers by the time they're 18, we need them doing this by the time they're 12, and we need them doing this by the time they're in third grade. And we need, and it got, kept getting pushed down to the point where some stuff that might be in those, that early childhood thing are sort of inappropriate to people who know a lot about early childhood. So I'm going to combine it with my, that's my sort of statement, and it's an issue for me. The second part of the issue is, we've had these early learning hubs that are now starting to have an impact on you. I'd just like you to talk about how all that's affecting you.
Well, I, a couple things, that's a great question. We, if you look at our assessment information, we don't just look at kind of those early literacy or early math skills because we know those social emotional skills are critically important and do affect the academic achievement. So a lot of our work is working on just the social skills of self-regulation, being in control of their behavior, being able to listen and follow directions. So, and we embed, instead of saying we're just doing, we're not going to do worksheets, or we're all doing an A today, but we're embedding that content of the early literacy and math skills in a developmentally appropriate way. So I think we're excited about the work that we're doing because we feel like we can do appropriate expectations, but we can also support those, those important skills that our kids weren't coming in with. So I think that's important. And we do partner with the hub, and I think bringing the school district voice to the early learning hub has been really important as well. So I think that's something that our partners in the prenatal to age five weren't hearing a lot about or understanding what kindergarten looks like, how they can better support kids and families as they transition. I think that's a lot of the work that's happening this year.
So would you say that the early learning hub and those kinds of folks get it? That in fact, some of the stuff that's been pushed down might be a little developmentally inappropriate? And in fact, we need to be a little flexible in how we go about this process? Or are they helping, or are you feeling pressures that you don't like?
No, I think they're definitely helping. I think we're working together and wanting to support kids and families and working on best practices. So making sure the things that we're doing are research-based, are shown that we're appropriate, and we're supporting kids and have that as the focus.
I ask that question because I'll probably get a chance at some point to bend somebody's ear, so I, I want to know what to say.
And we invite you anytime. But we're excited about the work that's happening. I'm excited about the partnerships with our early learning hub and local providers and feel like that communication has really started taking off this year.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the reports for tonight. Next item is information items. You'll see our list of meetings coming up. On the last page there, we have at the end of this month, a work session on the 27th on the results policy. And then we're going to do an executive session following that. And then our regular February meeting will happen after that. Sophia, make sure you got your calendar up to date. Next item is audience communications on non-agenda items. And we have nobody signed up on non-agenda.
I was late, so I didn't get a chance to.
Come forward then. If you can state your name and address for the record, that'd be great. In three minutes, please.
Rebecca Roth, and what else did you say?
In three minutes, you name and address.
Name and address, 6631 Coast Drive, Southeast. Okay. I have here an article about the Oregon Department of Education fires sex ed specialist amidst scandal. Have you guys heard about this? Okay, good. His name is Brad Victor. There's going to be somebody replacing him. There's going to be somebody replacing him, and they run sexuality workshops that, if you know the details of them, the public schools really ought to come with a disclaimer now, so that parents are warned about what's going on. The scandal is not nice that he's involved in. So, back when I started homeschooling, the state held hearings about homeschoolers sexually abusing their children, keeping their children at home to sexually abuse them. Well, I think the public schools ought to come with that kind of a disclaimer now. Because, or let's have hearings about the public schools. We're inviting Planned Parenthood into the schools to teach sex ed. Planned Parenthood does abortions. I have a book at home called Blood Money. I'll bring it to any of you, if any of you will read it, please. Please read it. It's about, it's the life story of a lady who owned five abortion clinics, and every day, her goal was to get into some classroom somewhere, especially kindergartners. It took her, if she could have 10 minutes alone with a classroom of kindergartners, she had them hooked. It only took 10 minutes to get them to believe that she was the sexuality expert, that they should come to her with all their problems, and that their parents knew nothing. Her goal was to reap five abortions per girl before they graduated high school. She also wanted them to come to her for contraceptives, which she made sure were designed to fail. Planned Parenthood has an agenda. They have a monetary, they are driven by a monetary agenda, and we, as taxpayers, are paying for it. And we are paying for these kind of peoples to run horrendous, horrendous workshops, where the kids are encouraged to do things. The curriculum they use is designed to make them sexually active. I don't know if any of you have ever looked at the Planned Parenthood curriculum, but it should not be given to kids. What's being given to the kids in the schools would be, on the streets, a person would be called courting. When a child, when a pedophile wants to court a child, they provide them pornographic materials. Those pornographic materials are in the Common Core. They're being offered to our kids. We should not be doing this to children.
Okay, Rebecca, that's three minutes. Could you wrap it up, please?
When somebody wants to do something with a child, they get them away from their parents, and they get them viewing materials that make them want to go along with what is being done to them. And often, the child doesn't have the faintest idea they're being abused and used, until later on in life, it comes to them that they were. It ruins lives, having this type of stuff go on in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Next agenda item is board reports on activities in the last month. Anybody have anything they want to express? Chris?
Paul asked a question in an email, and I volunteered to answer it based on my service as the liaison with the Career Tech Committee. So I have his email in front of me, and I just wanted to quickly go through the questions that he had. The first one was, I am curious about the curriculum. General statement, Paul, is that the curriculum for the home building program was really pretty easy to come by, it was pretty straightforward, we already have had those in our district, and so it was a matter, it was pretty easy. The manufacturing has been a little bit more complicated, but as I understand it, they are making good progress on it, with a lot of help from folks that are in the field of preparing people for such work. So the curriculum's getting there. It's pretty good in one place and getting there in the other one. Actual cost versus earlier projections, I don't know exactly what the money situation is currently. I'll dig into that before next month and try to get to you on that one. Staffing, they've hired the person to do the construction, and I understood at the last meeting, which was last week, that they were closing in on somebody for manufacturing, but I'm not sure that's actually happened yet. So that should be, pretty soon be wrapped up. Student recruitment, they've put together flyers, one for the community, just basically talking about the program, what its objectives are, and how people could get involved if they wanted to, and another flyer for students and parents. Those are, as of last week, in their final mock-up, and they were getting ready to be mass-produced. Students are currently being counseled and working on their programs for next year, and so John's big work right now is around the idea of getting to vice principals for curriculum and getting to counselors to make sure that they are real aware of what's going on, so that kids can get all the questions answered. So as of this point, there's no students signed up, because we aren't there yet. And building readiness is sort of amazing and exciting. It seems like every time I look at that place or go by it, there's a whole lot more. They started on the outside, so it looks like all sorts of wonderful stuff's been going on, because it's so different on the outside. But the administrative wing, if you want to call it that, the main office area and reception area is starting to be sheet rocked by somebody's father here. I was just finding out they got some of the contracts. So that's, they're actually at sheet rock stage, so that's pretty good news. Great, thank you. Any other questions anybody has about that process?
I just want to make a comment, too. Internally, and we have not had a chance to talk to Rick and Nancy about this yet, but we thought it was about, it's time to have some for-your-information-type reports before the board. And there's a couple other topics beyond CTE that are coming before us, you just need some ongoing. So we'll discuss that at agenda planning.
Anybody else have anything to report on activities? All right. Paul, you got?
Chuck and I were at the award for the Mellon.
Milken.
Milken, yes, the Milken Award. It was nice, it was a very nice ceremony.
Could you believe how quiet those kids came in?
No.
It was amazing.
Yes.
I didn't know they were there for a little bit. I went, wow. That is a well-run school.
Well, when the superintendent's in the building, I think it changes a lot.
Maybe.
Kids don't know who the superintendent is.
No. They could not have sat there that long, unless they were trained previously.
Okay, since that's it for board reports, we will have the superintendent's comments before we adjourn.
All right, I just have two reports. One is, we officially have a technology director, and guess what? He is in the audience tonight. He's officially moved here from Hermiston. Bob Silva is our new Director of Technology. In a long, extended transition period that felt like years, didn't it, Bob? Welcome. All moved, all settled, and been here full-time just since yesterday. So we are so happy to have you here. What's that?
You may didn't come to a school board meeting on your second day.
He just magically appeared.
So spell his last name?
Silva. S-I-L-B-A-N, and it's going to be Robert in our email system. And then I just wanted to take a minute to pause, because it is School Board Appreciation Month, and so you, of course, want me to say nice things about you, because I know how much you'd like the attention. But I do think it's important for our community to just take a moment to recognize about the hours you do spend in volunteering for this job, and you treat it as a job and attended the details and spend lots of hours. And I don't know if people don't get a chance to see you, how, if they really understand the work that you do. And at this level, to also create that vision for our school district, and to create that environment that says all kids can learn, and all means all, and to really set the direction. The things that I get to see, I know are a result of your leadership. So thank you for that. I know often you are not thanked enough for what you do, but I, for one, and I know the rest of the staff, really is oh-so appreciative of what is volunteer position. So thank you, and Happy New Year.
We're going to adjourn this meeting.
You have the control.